Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We'll call to order St. Clair County Human Services Committee. Have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Mr. Semasko.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Chairman Riley.
Here.
We stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in indivisal, with liberty and justice for
Have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Make a motion, we accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next, we have any citizens to be heard. Okay, any updates? Not seen conceptual initiatives?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. Old business? Under new business, Item A, Resolution of 1420.
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I would move that the restoration of essential local public health fund resolution be forwarded to the Board for final action.
Support.
Moved and supported. We need roll call on that one.
No.
No? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Item B, Phase II Michigan Maternal Infant Early Childhood Home Visiting Program.
Chairman, I would move that this be sent to the full Board.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Item C, Resolution 1421, replacing renewal of senior millage. I know Dave Hells here, Laura Newsome, Crystal Jones, if you would like, before we vote on this, if you'd like to step up and say a few words of your own.
Thank you for putting it on your agenda tonight for final action so that we can get it to county clerk on a timely basis. It's due in a week or so to him so that he can get the language shaped up for the ballot itself. When we were working on our last year's budget that we presented to you in December, the end of the year, we talked about the fact that we had two millages coming due. We had a five-tenth mill that was due, and we had a three-tenth mill that was due. And we told you at that time that Commission on Aging would be looking at the possibility and the likelihood and the need for rolling those two millages together to create a .8 mill, which is really what we're collecting here, .5 and .3 collectively, we're collecting a .8. And turning that into the language that you see before you as the recommendation from the Commission on Aging itself at its April meeting was to ask you to consider putting on the August primary ballot language which would constitute a renewal of those two mills, .5 and .3, for a four-year period and make it as simple as possible for the public to understand. I think the language you have before you is as simple as legally we can make it and as corporate council has drafted for you. We had just a point or two to let you know that how important that three-tenths of a mill has become. Because historically, we've been collecting five-tenths of a mill for a long time. But the three-tenths helped us to restore cuts that we had made in 2010, 2011, 2012, and to also give cost of living economics to the program providers, the service providers. So those dollars that we were able to collect in addition to our normal .5 and .3 helped us stay even with the world, basically. Laura wanted to point out to you how important it has been to the Council on Aging, because obviously, the Council on Aging receives the largest portion of senior millage funds. And if you think of something that you want me to try to respond to, I can. Laura wanted to say a word or two, and I think that's probably all the time that we need to take with you because I believe you all support us and support the senior millage.
Thanks, Dave. Dave has done a good description here of the business part of this. I wanted to tell you about the human part of this and how important this senior millage is to the seniors that we serve. And I'm speaking for Council on Aging, but we are just one of seven agencies, as you know, that do receive the millage funds. When we campaigned in 2012 for the increase, one of the things we talked about was the need for the increase because the baby boomers have turned age eligible, as you know, they are the fastest-growing segment of the population, and we knew that within a very few short years, we would not be able to maintain current service levels without that increase. We also said that the millage itself, the half-mill and the increase, became a service security in the event that we lost funding. None of us would have ever believed the federal government would shut down. As you know, that happened last year. I'm very much involved with a group called the Michigan Directors of Services to the Aging, MDSA. It's a statewide group of my counterparts in the counties across the state. I know for a fact that when the government shut down, there were a number of agencies that had to either completely close their doors, even for that short period of time, or had to significantly reduce service. Because of the senior citizen service millage and the generous support from the voters in this county, we did not miss, the seniors did not miss, one meal, one ride, one bath, one program, nothing. We didn't skip a beat in service to 10,000 senior citizens. And I thought that was important for you to recognize that this millage is the reason that the seniors in this county have the quality and the quantity of service, and we certainly hope that with your continued support, this will go on. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Gary, do you have a?
I just wanted to make sure that it's printed right, heard right, whatever. From a legal point of view, a practical point of view, because the word "increase" was used, but that was a couple of years ago, this is strictly a renewal of the existing millage. There is no increase of any kind built into this, and that this increase is of the millage which has been overwhelmingly approved by the St. Clair County taxpayers already. So I just want to make sure that the message was out there. This is not an increase, it is just a basic renewal of what the Council on Aging currently has.
Well, at this time, I strongly support this, so I'd like to move that Resolution 14.21, placing the renewal of the senior millage, on ballot for final action.
Support.
I'll support it.
Supported by Hydeman. Any other questions? Anybody have? Okay, I want to do a roll call, please.
Is that for final action?
Yes, it is.
Yes, final action.
Final action.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm.
Yes.
Chairman Riley.
Yes.
David and Laura, you're certainly welcome to stay in crystal, but I know how busy everybody is, and if you want to escape right now, you're certainly welcome to. But thanks for coming, and we're all very much behind you. Okay, next, any other human service matters?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to apologize. When we voted on Resolution 7B, the Phase II Michigan Maternal Infant and Early Childhood Visitation Program Project Grant, I don't, I see in their letter that they requested final action at this meeting. I'm not sure if we included final action in our resolution.
No, we did not.
To the full Board.
Pardon me?
The motion was to move to the full Board.
Correct.
They, I note in their letter that they are asking for final action tonight.
That was moved by Commissioner Greatop.
Can I redo it for final action?
You have to rescind the previous.
Motion to reconsider.
Yeah, you really have to, yeah, it can be either reconsideration or to rescind the prior one and replace it with final action. I would rescind it and just replace it with final.
I'll make a motion to rescind my motion. I'll second that.
Okay.
Then you need to move to.
Then I'll make a motion that we do this for final action.
Supported by? Okay, any questions on that now?
Do you need to vote on the rescinding part first?
Yeah, you should vote on the first.
Okay, let's do on the rescinding then first, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, and then final action voting by?
Greatop and Tomlin supports, and then final action.
Okay.
All in favor on that one.
All, but do we not have to do roll call on that?
No, that was a spending money.
Okay, all right, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, very good, thank you. Thanks for bringing that up too, Carl, I missed that too. Okay, information only, Health Department Point of Interest, Item A.
I'll move we receive and file packets.
Moved and supported by?
Support.
Mr. Greatop. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, move for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Support it. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to call to order the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee. Will the clerk take the role, please?
Have Gary sign it.
Yep.
One second, Chairman. Commissioner Tomlin.
Here.
Commissioner Semasko.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Present.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Chairman Greatop.
Here.
Any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I'm waiting for a motion.
I move the approval of the agenda as printed.
Support. Moved and supported. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to address judiciary and public safety? Mr. Riley, are you here to talk to Judiciary and Public Safety Committee? No? Okay, thank you. Any updates? No updates. Conceptual initiatives? Hearing nothing from administration, there's no old business. Under new business, Item 7A, 2014 Bulletproof Vest Grant Application for Final Action.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the bulletproof vest grant application be approved and that this be final action of the Board.
Support. I have a motion and support from Commissioner Riley. Discussion or questions? Then we better do a roll call on this one.
This is 50% match?
Yes, sir. It's in their budget.
It's in the sheriff's budget.
Yes, it is.
Commissioner Riley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Semasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm.
Yes.
Chairman Greatop.
Yes.
Item 7B, Amendment Number Two, Inter-Agency Agreement with Community Mental Health for Mental Health Coordination Services. I'll move we turn this over to the final Board. Support. I have a motion and support to send this on to the full Board. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of sending it on to the full Board?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other judiciary or public safety matters? Hearing none, information only, the mental health court statistics are in your package, gentlemen, for your reading pleasure.
I move to receive and file packets.
Motion is received and filed packets. Support. And supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I move we adjourn.
Support.
Motion to adjourn, moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That meeting is over. I want to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Tomlin.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Commissioner Semasko.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
Chairman Hydeman.
Here.
Any addition, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Greatop.
Support.
By Commissioner Tomlin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nay. Motion carried. Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental or public works matters? Seeing none, we have, I believe, an update from Kerry Heppening and Matt Williams on the SRF fund bond issue. We're bonding for some work to be done out at landfill.
Back in March, the Board of Commissioners approved a notice of intent to issue debt for our landfill construction project. That started the 45-day referendum period going for this project. At your full Board meeting in two weeks, we will be coming forward with you with an authorizing resolution, and that's the final piece that the Board will need to adopt prior to us being able to issue those bonds for the SRF loan. The 45-day referendum period actually does not expire until the 24th of May, but the resolution is being written as such that says pending no voter referendum, that the Board is authorizing us to go forward with issuing this debt. In speaking with bond counsel, they said it's very common to write the resolutions this way just due to timing of commission meetings, so it's not unusual at all.
Are there any questions? No questions.
And good evening, Commissioners. For my part of this quick update, I believe Kerry distributed a memorandum to each of you which details what the loan will be paying for, what kind of work will be done. I can elaborate on any of those items there, covered in the memo, if you'd like me to do that. So I guess in the interest of being short and sweet, I'll just entertain questions and let the memo speak for itself. Think pretty well, we're in last time and talked about everything from A to Z.
I don't see any other Board members with questions. Matt, I thank you.
Very good, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Matt.
Let's keep the public informed about this. Conceptual initiatives? Excuse me, any other updates from Board members? Seeing none, any conceptual initiatives from administration?
None.
No old business, new business. We have a drain commissioner that I think wants us to pledge full faith and credit for the Lakeland Drain Bonds. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we send that on to the full Board for approval. Support. Supported by Commissioner Tomlin. Any discussion on that? Would you, Mr. Riley, give us a quick rundown on?
I would be happy to give you a brief rundown. This drain was petitioned back in 2002 and was deemed necessary by the Board. Then through the years, it's been designed and residents didn't care for the design and bought the drain commissioner at the time to not run it through. And when I came in office, we started working with the residents to get an idea of what they wanted, and I brought in an engineering company that came up with a, I must say, a pretty decent design that the residents enjoyed, or well, they really liked and decided to go with it, and we're moving forward on it, hopefully give these people some relief with some issues of drainage that they have. And in this case, it's privately owned roads and MDOT that will be involved with the payments. The county at large is not part of it, so prices came in really good, which will help the residents, and one resident in particular that's been flooding out for, well, since That's it in a nutshell, and thanks for passing us on.
Commissioner Tomlin.
I have been out on a portion of this project with the drain commissioner, and there are people on Wild Rose Lane in Birchville Township that have been suffering significant flooding. It's undermined some of the foundations of some of their homes, and it's a very worthwhile project, and I'm really pleased to see that the project under our current drain commissioner is moving ahead.
Yeah, it's been an uphill battle the whole time, but we're there and ready to go, so we appreciate it.
Commissioner Greatop. I was just going to ask you, Bob, is this the area that flooded, was it two years ago when we had the heavy rain? Is that where all that flooding took place?
It's one of the sections. That's the next project, that's down a little bit.
And this drain will relieve that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One of the problems, yeah.
This isn't the same one, is it?
It's the same area.
Okay.
There were like three drains right in a row that, drain districts that got hit pretty hard with that 2012 storm, so, but it'll take care of their issues. And it'll keep M25 in that area from flooding over again, so.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Any other? Commissioner Rushing has a question. Be start in July?
Yes, in July.
Approximate completion date?
I'm sorry? Completion date? Probably November is when everything will be in and done, so.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nay. Motion carried. The Septic Tank Appeal Board reappointment, and I would like this for final action so those issues can be dealt with. Could we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that, we have four candidates here, Mr. Allen Rialat, Mr. Tom Kaufman, Mr. Tom Morgan, and Mr. Wesley Simmons, all be reappointed to a term that ends December 31st, 2015.
And this is for final action?
I'd support that.
And it's supported by Commissioner Riley. Any questions or discussion on these individuals? Many of them, as you can see, are professionals in the field, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nay. Motion carried. Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report is here. I would entertain a motion to file the Smith Creek Activities Report. Motion to file. Need a second? Support. Commissioner Tomlin for a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nay. Motion carried. Any other environmental, public works matters? Sure, yeah. Under information only? Yes. Under other environmental, public works? I don't know if you wanted it there under updates, but I just wanted to let you know that about two weeks ago, I took a trip over to Harson's Island to the DNR site over there with Representative LaFontaine, and then last week, I took another trip over there with Senator Pavlo and Representative Lowers, looking at what's going on over there and what they have, and the big push going on over there and on the mainland side to preserve the marsh area. They're working on 600 acres, they're looking for grants. You guys approved a letter last week, a week before, which we appreciate over there. This is for invasive species? That's a part of it. It's developing the whole thing and part of that. I wanted to let you know that the legislature has approved $6 million for invasive species, which includes the fragmites. We haven't divided that, we. Right. They haven't divided that up yet, so we don't know what portion we're going to get, but certainly, we're going to get some money there. Senator Pavlo took all that information back to Lansing, talked about the real gem that we have there on the island and on the mainland. He met with a fellow by the name of Craig, or I'm sorry, Keith Cray. He's the director of the DNR, and so Senator Pavlo has met with him to talk about everything that we have down there, the programs that are going on, preserving the marsh, everything that's happening down there, a lot of stuff going on. And he met with them, and our goal is to bring him out to the area, this is the guy that runs the entire DNR for the entire state, to get him out here both to the island and to the mainland and to take a look at what we have and what is going on in that particular area. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. You're going to hear a lot more about it in the near future as the grants become available and as things begin to happen in that area. Excellent. Okay, information only, Laurie, you have a big event coming up here with the Island
Hello, I'm Laurie from Planning, and a lot of you have gotten my email about the National Water Trail, we're going to celebrate the Island Loop route. So as you recall, about a year and a half ago, I came in front of you and asked if I could apply for the National Water Trail designation for one of our 16 paddling routes, and you said yes, so I did. Took 11 months, and we got it. It went through two committees in the Department of Interior, so we got it, and it's a great thing for St. Clair County. It's the first national water trail in the state, and there's only 14 in the nation, and some of those rivers are like the Mississippi River, the Hudson River, the Chattahoochee, so St. Clair County's on the map. And I just wanted to invite you all to this, and it's May 10th, Saturday, day before Mother's Day, starts at 9:30 in the morning at Bakersfield Park, and we have Congresswoman Candace Miller and Senator Stabenow are attending, as well as a lot of our state legislators. So we're going to have 45 minutes of talking about the loop, and I'm going to explain what it is and that it's a big deal. But the most important part of the day, we're going to have a paddle, and our Island Loop is 10.2 miles long, but it's for experienced paddlers, so we're going to cut it in half and have the experienced people go one way, and they'll be escorted by two experienced paddlers at the beginning and the end, and then two St. Clair County Sheriff jet skis. Then we're going to have a poker paddle for Then we're gonna have a poker paddle for beginners on the Black River where it's very safe. And there'll be seven stops, and the kayakers get a card along the way, and at the end, the top three hands will get a prize, and the prizes were donated by Great Lakes Docks and Decks. And so there's three things going on at once. There's two paddles, and then there's a scavenger hunt, because I expect people to come from out of town, and not everyone will paddle, so people that are watching their friend paddle, maybe they can do the family scavenger hunt in downtown Port Huron, then they can also enjoy the lighthouse. So we just want a lot of people to come to St. Clair County and enjoy Port Huron and our water. So I just wanted to thank Sheriff Donilon. He's given us four boats, four escorts, to escort the paddlers. Coast Guard will be there with two boats under the bridge, and Port Huron Fire Department volunteered their boat, so people have been offering to help, and for instance, like Domtar Industries, they're a stop on the poker paddle, as well as the fire department, the Port Huron Fire Department, and the college, SC4, as well as that little boat, Black River Boat Club, they're also a stop. So I just wanted to tell you what was going on, and you all are invited, and for the dignitaries, which is yourselves, we're having the 32-foot safe boat that's leaving from Bakersfield and gonna go down the Black River, past the paddlers, and then we're gonna go up the St. Clair River and under the bridges, and we're gonna stop at the Coast Guard Marina, and then we're gonna walk to the lighthouse and have a lunch to celebrate this big day. So you're all invited. If you could let me know, some of you have already let me know if you can attend either Friday or by Monday, the latest, 'cause I've gotta tell the caterer how many. So, and also, I just wanted to tell you that we're getting on the map about paddling. I was interviewed by Travel Michigan, so we were on WJR Saturday and Sunday, and that reaches quite a lot of people. So now people around the state and the Midwest know that we're a paddling destination, and we're gonna get our third ADA accessible, handicapped accessible kayak launch in the city of Port Huron in June, and we're raising money for that. We're pretty close, and we already have two on that loop, so the Blue Ways of St. Clair has kind of gone beyond all our dreams, and as you remember, four and a half years ago, that was a DEQ, or yeah, DEQ Office of the Great Lakes grant. And this, this event on May 10th hasn't really cost us much, except, it hasn't cost us anything except for the sheriff's office, you know, using their staff and their escorts. People have donated things and offered, and it's just been really, a really good community event. So are there any questions? Just wanted to invite you all, and the public is welcome.
All the commissioners there, since I gotta emcee it, I wanna see you guys in attendance.
We have a performance.
You bringing a pontoon boat?
You don't have to paddle. We have a safe boat for you. It's the 32-foot boat. We're gonna be going by the paddlers, and it's gonna be a great day. But yes, Commissioner Bohm is gonna emcee.
Okay, Commissioner Graytop.
I just wanna say that this is a fabulous thing and great honor that we've been named as a national trail. And, you know, when you first started this thing, I watched it kind of begin to develop, and it got more and more and more. And just plugging in for the south end, I can't wait until we finish the Crispin Drain Area down there on Harson's Island, because I think we'll be a rival down there for somebody that really wants to do some good paddling through the marsh areas and things of that nature. You've been in part of that, I know, and I think it's just gonna be a great thing, and I wish you well.
Good, thanks. And the Crispin Drain will be our 17th Blue Way, but I don't know what it's gonna be called. I've already told the supervisor of Clay Township that Clay Township gets to name it, so that'll be, should be maybe a contest or something, but you were talking about the fragmites in that area earlier, and it's the largest freshwater delta in the United States, and I think that will bring a lot of paddlers. It's unique in St. Clair County in that we have a delta, we have a huge river, we have a Great Lake, and these lazy, slow rivers, so in a short area, you have a lot of different paddling experiences, so people can come here and spend many days and get lots of different experiences, and that's what we can really sell to draw tourists here. And the more people paddle, like it, and then the more they will help to get the fragmites out of there.
Once, once we finish the Marine City dredge cut, also, there's gonna be a handicap launch back inland right there that you'll be able to access from there, and getting over to the island is a mere two to three miles downstream, so it's an easy run to get down there, jump in and do another one, so you could probably set up a couple of loops in that, in that area.
Right.
There'll be a lot of things that can happen down there once these other two projects are completed.
Right, and I know that there's some money that's cleaning up the dredge cut there. They're doing some habitat restoration, and St. Clair County Parks and Rec bought three lots in there, so that'll be another park, and it's also right along the Bridge to Bay Trail, which will help our Trail Towns effort that's already undergoing.
Lots tie in with the drain commissioner's lot right there, so there's a total of, six lots?
Well, one large lot is drain, that probably poses much of a problem, so. It'll be a nice, nice problem.
And it'll be right on a triangle where you have the Bridge to Bay Trail and the Marine City dredge cut, right there. So on one side is the trail, on the other side is the dredge cut. When it comes together, it's gonna be good.
And in, in the dredge cut there, it's safer. We found that these ADA kayak launches, they're made really well, but the St. Clair River beats them up really bad, so we need to have them a little bit more in calmer waters so that will be a good spot in the dredge cut, 'cause it's not very far from the big river. The Marysville one has gotten beat up a lot. Any other questions?
Good job.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully you guys smell ten, it's gonna be a fun day.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to receive and file the information only portion A through D.
So moved.
Support, supported by Commissioner Riley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Motion to receive and file packets.
Motion to adjourn.
Receive and file made by Commissioner Graytop, second by Commissioner Rushing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Graytop?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. I've been made aware that we do have some additions to the agenda. We need to add on 7G Purchasing Reorganization, and we'll be removing 11B, the purchase of property.
I'll make that motion.
Have support?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to updates. Do we have any updates?
Just one quick one. On Monday, ITC, which is the power line company, they actually sponsor the WJR Morning Show with Paul Smith. I think it's Paul Smith, I don't get up that early.
Paul Smith, yeah.
Okay. They had the opportunity to put him wherever they would like, and they actually contacted myself, to put him in touch with Marcy Fogel. They're going to be doing the morning show from the Hilton Garden, or the Hilton property up there in Port Huron. I know some of the dignitaries are gonna be talking, and, you know, just a great opportunity to showcase our area, and it's gonna be different people to come in and speak on that, so I'd like to thank ITC for giving us that opportunity.
When are they doing that?
That is Monday, 5:30 till, I'm not sure what time the morning shows, till 5:30 till nine, somewhere in there.
All right, do we have any other updates? Okay, moving on to conceptual initiatives. Do we have any? All right, have none, old business. Have no old business, we'll move to 7A, Retirement Ordinance Revisions. Have a motion to send this to the full board.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to 7B. Pro Circuit Court Manning Table Revisions? Have a motion to send that to the full board?
Aight, so moved.
You have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. 7C. See, we have a couple there. Do we have a motion to send the two appointments to the full board?
Almost that they'd be forwarded to the full board.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving to 7D. Cancellation of the 5, 8, 14 Quarterly Workshop. I don't really need, we need a motion, we're just making an announcement that the workshop has been canceled. So we'll move on to 7E.
Excuse me, Chairperson, we do need a motion that will officially amend your schedule.
I would support it.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to 7E, Administrator Controller Employment Agreement Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we send this on to the full board, or is it final action? Nope, just send it on to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion?
Like to make a couple comments. Steve and myself, back when Sean Groden said that he was going to be leaving, I was probably the first person he contacted about the issue, and talked to Steve a little bit about this, and at that time, I had actually called a lot of the judges, a lot of the other people, and had made, asked for input whom they thought would be a good administrator. And at that time, there wasn't one person, I probably talked to a dozen people that said Bill Kaufman gave him the opportunity. And so we talked to Bill about moving out from Metropolitan Planning Director to become the administrator for us in St. Clair County, said, "Take some time, think about it." He got back with us. And, you know, like anything, I'm glad that he stepped up to do that. I think he had actually done a better job than what I anticipated, and I've been a huge advocate and a huge supporter of his, and I think any of us on this board that have dealt with Bill have found that, and I think his peer group will speak very highly of him also. So, as I often say, if I never ever do anything else right, I heard you, since so did Steve, so I'll give Steve credit too. So, if anybody else like to echo those thoughts.
Only comment I'd have, Mr. Chairman, is I never had an opportunity to work with him the first time I was on a board, and when he came on, of course, I had nothing to do with that, but since I've been on, I've been really extremely pleased with the opportunity to work with him, the openness with him, and I think you made a great choice, and Jeff, you're probably right, that'd be one of the great first things, if not the only thing you did right.
Not arguing that.
I, I just wanna make one comment. I was out west deer hunting when I got a call from Sean Groden indicating that he would be leaving the Board of Commissioners, and so I thought about it for a few days, and on the way back to Michigan, I put in a call to Jeff, and I said, "Jeff, you know, I think Mr. Kaufman should, should step up the plate." Jeff said, "I already asked him." He was one step ahead of me.
Yeah, Steve.
The comment I'll make is that I felt that with, by hiring Bill, we would bring to the board good relations with our departments and our employees, 'cause he had a good tenor and a good communication skills as part of canoe, and you were a voice for a lot of that, and you did bring, I think, to the department, to your department, a lot of credibility and good relations, and that continues today. So I think we've made a really good choice, and I'm really happy we can continue your employment contract with the county. I'm glad you're with us, I'm glad you're sticking with us.
Thank you. I, I did not know Mr. Kaufman very well when I first came on the board, but I did vote for him for the job, and if I could do it over again, I would vote the same way. And when the contract comes up in two weeks, I'm gonna vote for it again, because I think you're doing a great job, Bill, and we appreciate, I appreciate, everything you're doing and the guidance that you give everybody. I know that you're guiding a lot of these guys. They think they're doing it, but I know that you're doing a lot of the guiding here. So, thank you for that.
I'll just stack you all, all of the comments. Lot of support for Bill, he really makes our county shine, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to 7F, Addendum 1, Employment Agreement. Dr. Annette Merk content.
Make a motion that we send it on to the full board?
Support.
Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to 7G, Purchasing Reorganization. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support. Would we like to hear from Kerry?
Late last week, we received notice from our existing purchasing clerk that she will be moving on to different employment, so we will currently, as of next Friday, have both of our purchasing positions vacant. We thought this would be a great time to look at what we're doing and how we're doing it, to see how we could revamp our division and make it a little bit more efficient. We currently have two purchasing clerk positions that are at the same level. We felt if we had one professional buyer position, that they could spend, focus their time on the contracts, bidding out of services, and the higher level purchasing functions, and then have part-time clerical staff that can handle the day-to-day ordering, the data entry into the system and the paperwork. Our proposal actually is cost neutral, or it saves about $6,000, but it does change our manning table from two full-time purchasing clerks to one full-time purchasing coordinator and two part-time account clerks.
I just have one question. Part-time clerks, what's the intended hours period? 28 max?
Yep, 28 max.
Do you have any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, at this time, do we have any other Ways and Means Matters? Seeing none, information only? We have none, may I have a motion to receive and file packets?
So moved.
Have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go to 11A, Executive Session in regards to the collective bargaining negotiation and juvenile council. I'd like to have a motion for it to go in executive session and adjournment at the same time.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we go into executive session, and when business is done there, that we adjourn the Ways and Means Committee.
Have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.